The last council of the year is going to be a little bit lengthy, but we will get through it in a proper time, I believe. Six o'clock is supper. Counselor Drew, give you a minute and then you can offer a prayer for us.
Sure, I'll do that for you.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather as a council and mayor, we're grateful for the blessings of living in this good community. We pray this night, as we discuss issues and concerns and budget, that we will be able to have Thy Spirit to guide and direct us and bless us this Christmas season to feel Thy Spirit grateful for all that we enjoy and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you so much. Well, we will call this meeting to orders on this 12th of December 2017. We recognize our good and faithful Channel 32. Thank you, Corey, for being there and Merry Christmas to you. We have some additions to the agenda, so bear with me. I think I have them all. We need to add on the 7C, the ACP application for intermunicipal collaboration and intermunicipal discussions, yeah.
What is it again?
Call it ACP grant.
ACP?
ACP grant application. All right. There's 7D, there will be called letter from Minister Northway. There is 8A, there would be called financial report. It says none this meeting, but there is one. And Jeff, I believe I'm missing one.
12E, land sale.
12E?
4E.
12E land sale, yes. So that would be on the confidential item. So you will see there's certain amount of confidential item, but all of them are within the fourth round. One is employment, one is golf course invoice, one is a golf course contract, and there are two land sales. All right, so with those amendments, I need a motion to approve.
Mayor, one question under 7BA.
Yes.
I'm asking administration, should that go under in camera? It's going to be dealing with another government unit?
No, it is a public item, Counselor, and if you give me a chance, when we get to that, I will be able to give you a sense of purpose to deal with that issue.
Well, I brought it up with Orch. I got other information concerning that also, but I'm just concerned about relationships between the two government bodies.
Well, this is why we need to kind of work on this one together.
Okay.
Okay, so with this...
I'll take the motion to adopt the agenda with the additions as an amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, we do not have a delegation this time, so let's move on to 5. Adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of November 2018, 2017. Counselor, so... Okay, any questions regarding those minutes before we are off? Okay, singing down, all in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go to 6, bylaw and policy, budget 2018 to 2020. You will see that for this, we will actually review the budget. Jeff will help us to go through that. And we will then require a motion to approve the budget for 2018, which includes operation and capital. And then we need to approve budget operational and capital for following years in principle. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Council, you have the big 11 by 17s in front of you again. I just want to clarify one thing. If we get through this process and you as a council aren't comfortable with the budget, and I mentioned it last time, we can adopt an interim budget. We can discuss it further in the new year. So you don't feel like your back is against the wall to adopt the budget. You'll see in this budget, any changes since our last meeting are highlighted in the, let's call them purple, but that's probably not the right name. And so there's very few. We didn't change a lot since the last meeting. And so I just want to go through those to touch base on. There was very few that impacted the bottom line of the budget. The first one actually isn't a change. We had a change in there and then it ended up landing back where it was in November. So disregard the very first one there for MSI capital for operating. That's the same as it was when we presented it in November. But the big dollar one there, halfway down page 1, 124800 disaster grant. We're working towards getting this disaster money to do more work in the creek. That's starting to formalize. We, in November, we had a half a million dollars plugged in there because we just weren't sure the engineering wasn't done. So that number now is just under 1.5 million. Is the scope of work that could be done if DRP approves everything. So that's not confirmed, but just so you know, we also added that revenue to capital. So it was a net impact, a net zero impact on the budget. We added the revenue and the expense on the same thing. We'll see that a little later. So we'll see what happens with that one. The next one I want to talk about is on page 2, and it'll come up again here when we look at the bylaw amendment. So at the bottom of page 2, you see three changes. Two of them are the transmission and distribution, or domestic and commercial transmission charges, sorry. They were both increased to cover a balancing pool rider. And then right below that, you will see the balancing pool rider at 84,000. So I don't know if we've talked about the balancing pool before. The balancing pool is a collection of assets that no one bought when the province auctioned off everything. So the distributors generally share ownership of them. Up until last year, it was always a credit for us. We always got money back. We called it a balancing pool credit. That's just what we called it. But due to some policy change at the provincial level, the balancing pool is no longer profitable. And so we get to take our share of that loss. Where we used to get the benefit of it for years, we now get to share in the cost of it. So the town of Cardson is obligated to provide 84,000 dollars to cover losses in the balancing pool. And what we do there, why those first two accounts, domestic and commercial transmission, are higher is we simply change the rate, flow it through. So we increase the rates that are charged to cover the 84,000. And that's how we're covering that off, for proposing to cover that off this year. Mayor, you have a couple of questions on the table.
Yeah, you have a motion, you will have a motion later on.
Yeah, for the bylaw change, yeah.
Yeah. Counselor, go ahead.
Jeff, when you say that we have to share the balance, how is that calculated?
You know, I don't, I believe it's on just total consumption off the grid per distribution franchise area, is the word I'm going for. So Kevin's able to calculate it. What happens is Fortis has already prepared their amendment to change their rate to cover their total charge to the balancing pool, and then they pass on our portion to us. So they're actually the ones calculating it. And then Kevin is privy to that, and he prepares the amendments to our bylaw to cover it.
So if you are worried about what it represents for your electrical bills, about a dollar and 80 cents...
In the background, I had about a dollar 28 per average residential user per month.
Dollar 28 per month. That's what is represented by that shortage. So we're not talking extreme dollar, but on a whole, it's still 80,000.
Jeff, is that going to be perpetual now, forever?
Probably.
Every year?
Yeah.
Is there a chance that it'll ever go down, or is it going to go up? So I guess the question I'm asking you is, is this considered as a loss every year to the industry?
But you call it the lack of revenue to reflect the gain of revenue we had for years and years and years.
The theory is that if retail electricity prices go up in the province, the balancing pool will benefit. That's the theory, because it's all generation. Almost the entire balancing pool is on the generation side. And what's wholesale cost of a kilowatt electricity now? It's maybe 2 cents? It's just really, really, really low. So the theory is, is that yes, it may become profitable again. And I don't know all the details here, so I don't want to weigh too heavy into it. But a lot of the policy changes that the province has made in the electrical area this last couple of years, they're pulling all the profits out of the balancing pool to fund a lot of it. So they're draining it anyway. So I don't anticipate, I'm not hearing anyone anticipating that it will be profitable again. Sorry to be the deliverer of bad news. And this is another item change on the budget that doesn't have a net effect on the budget because we increased our charges and increased the expense. But it's still an increase to the community of 84,000 dollars.
And that's a buck 28 per month?
A month, on the average, playing the average.
Per bill?
Yeah, playing the average, correct. The next change was on page 4. They're both very minor in nature. One of them is we had for 2018 under computer expense office at 212503. We were under budget this year and were able to purchase some things in this calendar, so we just took that down a couple thousand bucks for next year. We're just getting close enough to the end of the year. We're starting to know some underlying numbers. Where we have 2,000 here, 2,000 there. The next one, three quarters of the way down the page, it's simply adding what's called an Alberta Association of Community Peace Officers membership for Brad. We've always just paid it out of the general. We simply made it a line item, so it's, so you can see it. And we haven't had a level one till this point, so, but we did pay it this year, anyway.
Mayor?
Yes.
Want to back up? Page, page 3. We intend to pursue legal action for outflow line failure, outflow line failure.
Yeah.
So we've got 50 grand committed to that this year, so pretty serious about going after this situation, huh?
Yeah.
If you want to have any hope to get money towards a problem that we believe is a manufacturing problem, you will have to sue the manufacturing company and the engineering company in order for us to have a chance to reach you any money.
It's interesting.
Am I correct?
Well, we have a 4.2 million dollar project that's prematurely failing. And so I feel it's expedient that we get to the bottom of it pretty quickly.
Isn't it interesting that they told us if we wanted to sue them? They're prepared to...
Yeah, but you know...
Well, they didn't pay out the...
They didn't say it flippantly like that. When I talked with StanTech, they said, "We're going to try and deal with the manufacturer. That's our first recourse. And if we can't do anything for you, you will have really no choice but to litigate. That's your option. We don't know what else to tell you." Because they're not going to voluntarily roll over and pay it. They're just not going to roll over and pay it. They feel that they, that the pipe is being stressed within the range they thought it would. They don't feel that the pipe is being stressed outside of what they felt was an acceptable range on the pipe when they spected. But their comment was simply, and again, I don't, they were not being cynical, just saying, "In the absence of any other option, you're going to have to litigate."
So I think there's wisdom in putting money aside.
So Jeff, if you go to page 7 at the top, and it says outflow line repairs, and we've got 30,000 dollars in it. Is that going to be also involved in that lawsuit?
Well, we anticipate, I hope, I hope we don't use a penny of it. But I anticipate, being we had a problem in December of 2017, that I'm going to have a problem in 2018. I just do. Now, the problems are getting less severe and further out. So what's happened is, the problems have been closest to the plant, so where the pressure is the highest. And we're getting further out. But, so I think they're going to be less frequent, and I think they're going to be less severe. But I still anticipate that until this is totally solved, we're going to...
But our legal action will definitely look at cost recovery?
Well, I would hope it would cover the legal costs too, yeah. You know, that would be the best hope.
Counselor?
Just back to Brad's membership. Is it the town's policy to pay professional...
Normally, yeah. So we pay, for example, Brandon, we pay a CET, ASAT it's called, we pay that membership. The town's paid for me to belong to the Economic Developers Association for years, those kind of things, yeah. Okay. Page 5 is only one purple line, as you can see, and all that is is matching the disaster return revenue in the expense side. So that's all that is. Nothing on page 6 has changed, nothing on page 7, nothing on page 8, nothing on page 9, nothing on 10. I have some notes here somewhere, I was sure of. Then we get all the way to page 12. And by the way, we can talk about anything in between here, but there's not another change until page 12. This was simply a, minor hockey was wanting, there's a bit of a backstory here. There was, there was going to be a little initiative to change the score clock at the brink. And so we thought the groups like minor hockey, figure skating, may be contributing. So under contributed assets, we had some money they might raise to go towards it. And you'll, we're actually taking care of it right now. Randy has found a fix for the clock that everyone feels will be good now for quite some time. We don't need to get it anymore. So you're going to see that the contributed asset is going away here, but the total expense down the line is going away. That was actually a net benefit on the budget. So that's just a contributed asset from a third party. The 5,000 dollars that used to be under donations is now gone. Page 13, these, neither of these are actually 2018 changes, but we illustrated them nonetheless. The first one, page 13, middle of the page, it just says a track hoe is more useful. We had to replace the John Deere 401. And Bart is suggesting we actually change that to a different piece of equipment that we can use a little better. So it was just a change in what the piece of equipment was. And that's not till 2019, which is only going to be approved in principle. But then 2020 was a fleet truck being changed. It was moved from an earlier year to free up some money in the budget as well. And then I'll be showing you, yeah, and then kind of attached to that, by the way. So that's Public Works Capital. But over the page, on page 14, this is attached with Counselor Banger. You brought this up last meeting. There was a tandem truck budgeted to be replaced in sanitary sewer. And Bart is saying, for the next few years, actually, we can move, we can use one of our older ones up there, because we're hauling less from up there. So he thinks we're fine, actually, for the next few years, to not have to buy another tandem in the short term. I just, we just brought that up after. That was 110,000 in that budget, and so that's been removed. And then two-thirds of the way down, you'll see it says, "We'll fix the existing score clock." So that was 10,000, and that's nil zero. And then the last one is the light capital. We just moved, we moved two items within this. It didn't change the total dollars. The electrical upgrades used to be 165, and the truck was 40. Now we just moved 5,000, because Leonard needs to get a work box built on that. And it's just covering the cost of the work box. But the net spending in capital for electrical didn't change. We just moved it between two items. And that's all the changes we made since our last meeting, Counselor.
Wow, that's rather impressive. Thank you very much.
So as...
Questions?
Oh, sorry.
Questions, Counselor?
While he's looking, like the mayor said, how this would normally work, and I put the policy in your backgrounder, is you would, someone would make a motion to approve the 2018 capital and operating budget, full stop. Then to approve the 2019 and 20 operating budget in principle and 19 to 22 capital budget in principle. We are required to pass three and five-year budgets. So when you see the policy in the backgrounder, it says things like 22XX1, that's year one, 2XX2, 2XX3. It's a bit complicated, because we plugged real numbers in there too. That's the intention if council's comfortable with the budget. Now, you have another look at this at mill rate time.
Yes.
So we're going to finalize requisitions. The province is going to tell us what they want for schools. All the other groups are going to tell us exactly what they want. And we'll have a go again at this at mill rate time. So, and we'll start talking in April and conclude it in May.
All right. So here you have it. You have a budget that has been presented to you, operating and capital. It's a balanced budget as required, and it needs to be passed if you are so inclined.
Mayor, unless anybody has any questions or serious objections, I'd move the, we'd pass 2018 operating.
And capital.
And capital budget as a whole one.
Yep. And then...
Then we will do the next...
You want that in?
You can do it in the same motion if you want to.
And then 2019.
And 20.
Operating. Operating and capital, but in principle, is that correct?
So 19 and 20 operating in principle.
Operating and capital.
Just operating. And then 2019 to 2022 capital.
Okay, what he said?
Should I make that?
What he said, what I said.
Yeah, it's a five-year capital, three-year operating.
2019, 2020 operating, and it is 2019 to 19, 20, 21, 22. 2022 in capital to be approved as presented in principle. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. I'd like to thank your finance department and your managers for the job, the tax, the law work, and all the stuff in July to gather all their information. It's a six-month process to come up to a budget that seemed to be so simple to add up.
I forgot, I wanted to point something out. We'll not change your motion, because I'm happy about it. Now, I'm going to tell you some stuff now the motion's passed.
And now you're telling me...
I was just happy to report that we, with all that, we were able to reserve 99,900 dollars in major utility capital. Council's goal back two years ago was about 100,000 on a three-year average. So we got 99,938 bucks. So we're a little under, Counselor. I'll try and be that much over next year. How about that? So I was happy that we found that reserve money for major utilities.
Yeah, which is something we always want to do, about 100,000 a year.
Jeff, just under page 8, on page 8, over on the side, I would say is 262330. It says the province will no longer participate in utilities of 2%. Does that Remington Center utilize the tourist information building?
They are working to get all, they are paying them until all of their infrastructure is no longer hooked to it.
Yeah.
So they're literally trenching a line all the way from their marquee to the Remington Museum, because they don't want to help pay our utilities at the information center. So I wish them well and change the budget.
Well, you know, which one is on? Sometimes it's not to the benefit of the taxpayer, or whatever.
Maybe legislature could be aware of that.
All right. Let's go to 6B. The Remington is an important facility for us in town. 6B bylaw amendment 1618A says traffic safety bylaw. If you look at it, the highlighted italic changes are there for you in a revised version. And there are two portions that have been given to you there. One is the parking on the B, that reads, "No person shall park a vehicle facing oncoming traffic on any highway within a town of Cardson." The other one is on the C, has to do with trailers and recreational vehicles to have a seasonal parking restriction on streets in Carson, on highways, according from October 31st to April 30th.
I would recommend we change that to the 30th, since there is no 31st in April.
You're exactly correct. And then you know something? I normally read everything carefully, and I did pick that one up. Good call, Counselor. All right, so here is what needs to be done with this bylaw. We need to have an understanding of how we want to look at bylaw. This one does not especially require public consultation. But because it impacts the public, I would say the wisest way to do it would be to pass a first reading today, let it go, and in January, worry about second reading, have a public open house, try to get some feedback from people. In general, nobody shows up, but you never know. And then adopt the, adopt the bylaw as amended. Because I really think those who have RVs or trailer would be glad to know what changes going to happen on recreational vehicles and that. Counselor Banger?
Jeff, on this bylaw, how does this relate to our delivery trucks early in the morning, delivering produce and so forth to our stores on Main Street?
Are you trying about facing the wrong direction of traffic?
Yes, and parked in the, right on the, right on Main Street, because there is no delivery at the back of stores, for a lot of these stores.
So it doesn't acknowledge that, obviously. If your concern is that that clause will prohibit them, and you don't want to, there is a clause in, and we could, so on 5.09, so in the amendment, it's section C. It says, "No person shall park a trailer on any street where they're designated, et cetera." So go down ways. At the end of this, it says, "When so attached, a trailer shall be a part of the motor vehicle and subject to regulation pertaining to the motor vehicle, except in the case of a marked commercial vehicle conducting their normal business and only in front of the residence where they are doing such business." So that could be expanded into that previous section of facing the other way, or not being the exact way on the street, if they're marked, doing business in front of the place they are doing business. What that stems from is when Lloyd started enforcing this, you'd have a lot of contractors who had, especially when we had the hail. They were all set up in front of homes, and he was going saying, "Look, you're unhooked." And so we, with that time, made the exception to say, "If you are in front of the place you're doing business, you're in the course of doing business, we're not going to enforce it." The other part of that was, many of the businesses, not all, by the way, but many of them carry a commercial liability insurance. And so in that case, the trailer's actually insured. If you or I just park our trailer on the road, it's not insured at all. There's no liability, there's no damage coverage, anything, generally, unless you have a special rider, but most of us don't. So that's where that stems from, the commercial piece. But obviously, it's your bylaw. Whatever you feel would be appropriate in between first and second reading, we will bring back to the table.
All right. So the question that you, of the amendment, possibly, that you would be proposing, Counselor Banger, is to change 5.26 or to amend that, that bet to...
No, I think it's, I think it's covered under 5.17.
Okay, so are we comfortable with the way it reads?
Yes, I am.
All right. So if we are comfortable, we need to have a motion to accept the first reading. Counselor, Counselor Cole?
Just wondering, just my observation, parking the wrong way on a street. We have a lot of family unions in this town. We have a lot of get-togethers. Do you give your own name and families, because they pulled in the wrong side of the road to go to a Sunday dinner? That, that kind of concerns me a little bit, that it's just a revenue maker.
It's not a revenue maker, it's a biting butt law.
Well, I understand that, but...
Because you're crossing, you're actually violating the traffic law. Not only you're violating the parking law, but you're violating the traffic laws.
I just suggest that the, that our bylaw officer has a lot of common sense and will exercise it.
Exactly.
I can tell you this clause is in response to a specific couple of offenders that insist on parking the opposite way of traffic for no, there's no logistical reason why they need to. It's simply convenient. And so he's trying to encourage them to do that the right way.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to tell them, I don't, I don't... Yeah, you know, I'm going to tell, I don't, I don't preach from one that doesn't, didn't get a warning and possibly even a ticket for that. We had a mover that came with a big, big C can. And I had to get out of my parking spot on a driveway. I backed up and faced in the wrong direction. Lo and behold, if I didn't get Lloyd that passed exactly at the right time. And only when I had the ticket. And I thought, you're right, I deserve it. I was a violated traffic law. And I didn't argue with the fact that he was right. Yeah. Counselor Bainbury.
Back in my days, there used to be a ticket issued for an illegal left-to-center, it was called. And I think that has been done away with, that you can park, you know, towards, towards the traffic. There is no more ticket involved in that or identified as that. But I feel there should be a timeframe in all of this parking, even on the commercial vehicles. Because somebody could take advantage, saying, "Hey, I'm unloading in front of my house. Well, it's been there for four days, are you still unloading?" You know, I think we should attach a timeframe. And parked left-to-center, such as Counselor Coe has suggested, yeah, you know, a four-hour situation or something like that, give them lots of time. But don't habitually park left-to-center just to park there.
I mean, there, there is, there is a comment that Counselor Selfman that's rotated. Our police officer is one who has told us his mission is first to educate. His mission is not to ticket. His mission is to educate, to bring the people to understand laws and laws and live by them.
That this, this situation I've seen, this is not just, the common sense is that this is a dangerous thing to do. I've seen people parked over there and they sit there and they go back and they get in their car. They just take off and there's a car coming this way and they're pulling in front of them. People are screeching brakes, people coming up the other way and they're, it's, it's a safety factor as well. And I'm, I have no problem. I'm just as guilty as you parking the opposite way. I, I see somebody parked over there, oh, I'm going to go say hello, right? And I'm over there and, oh, I shouldn't be doing that because it is dangerous. Especially if it's in your blind spot, because I have a blind spot in my van and I've come very close to hitting somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I paid my ticket, was not, was not jolly nor happy about it, but I thought it is, it's right. I was wrong.
But everything we're talking about, isn't it just a matter of what we, what we said? The bylaw officer, there, I don't think there's anything wrong with the wording here, other than the date. Yeah, we're going to fix that. But other than that, I feel like if our bylaw officer says what he has told us he will, he's not going to be out just looking for.
That's not his style.
Right? He's going to educate. And so this is going to be dinging the people that.
Do not want to learn.
Exactly. So I, I don't, I don't see a problem.
He'll need to educate a lot of people because I've heard a lot of complaints about tickets being given by our bylaw officer. Yes, they're breaking the law. I understand that, but there's, there's some unhappy people out there, and I'm just going to say.
Let us be a law-abiding people, that's what we ought to be. Okay?
I'm a social butterfly.
Okay, I think we discussed it. So you can vote against it, you can vote for the amendment, but I need a motion to move.
Mayor, if I could just real quick, especially for the new counselors. First reading doesn't bind anything, so any bylaw can die until third reading, okay? So it come, you can kill it either by failing the second reading or first reading. You can fail them both. We'll fail the first one, you won't have a second one. But what first reading does is put it on the table. And we can amend from there and we can mess around with this a little bit and we can have some discussion on it. So we'll bring back, well, we'll change the date. And I'll work with Brad on looking at, if there's reasonable timeframes on a couple of these things, we can look at that and how that would incorporate. But just so you know, doing first reading isn't binding anything going forward here. It just puts it on the table for that debate.
And the second reading, you can still make changes. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll move, motion to, I'll move to approve reading of, first reading of bylaw 1618A, traffic safety bylaw.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? No, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask quickly for my sake? For January, do you want any kind of invitation for public feedback on this that we advertise? So for example, I don't know, we're not legally required to advertise or have a full-blown public hearing. But we have in the past said, "Council is, is taking feedback on this proposal. If you'd like to come speak, please contact the CAO or send a letter in by this date." We've done that kind of a thing before, so it's a little less formal. Is there an appetite for that?
Personally, I would welcome that because the more you give a chance to the public to give us feedback, the more transparent it is, the more comfortable it is, the better it is.
Could we put on our electronic sign-out class that we're, we're looking at bylaw such and such and so forth?
Might be a tricky one to read with that much, we can see how a lot have been done before. We haven't tried. So if there's no major oppositions, we'll do a little bit of, "Please send your comments by this date" type of idea.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is 6C.
6 which C?
6C. Counsel approved operating request. And I will give Jeff a chance to explain what's happening here. We need to have a motion to request funding for operating account. And that's a little bit what you saw in, in the budget. So you want to talk about it?
So you have at your discretion $50,000 of operation contingencies. The account for wastewater distribution is over right now by, oh, what did I say in here? Now I gotta find my own background here. We need about $30,000 to cover it off. We're $22,000 over on the year, is where we are right now. We can just run it over and keep the money in your council-approved contingency and it'll net out the same at the end of the year. The amount of dollars we spent will be the same whether or not. But my thought was, when we go that over in percentage of a budget, I like to inform council that that's happened. And I think it's appropriate that you assign funds to cover the overage, even though the net doesn't change for us at the end of the year. We're going to take it from one pocket to the other. But it looks, I think it acknowledges the overage to council.
Mayor, if I can, what is that overage do?
Like what's it made up of?
Yes.
So one, it's the pipe and, and the equipment and the time to repair the pipe. The big one lately though is.
It's an overage of expenses.
The biggest expense we're incurring now is Alberta Environment will not let us divert into the Lee Creek because the creek level is so low. So we're having to hire pumper trucks to pump out of the pits and haul it to St. Mary's instead of just diverting it to the Lee Creek right there.
We can't put it in a creek anymore.
And that's what's costing us a bunch.
I'm sorry, so.
We're just going to move that we take $30,000 from our operating contingencies to cover off the repairs for the wastewater outfall.
Good. Thank you. Questions? Sign on, all in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go to 6D. Now here again, Jeff, that is a bylaw 1649C, electricity distribution bylaw amendment. There again, you want to maybe explain.
Sure. So you have three files on this on your computers? The third one is the schedule of all of our fees that we approve, as well as you approve as a council.
It's a complex document, so you will need to go to the last page.
The very last page of that rider is the proposed change to the balancing pool. This is that $84,000 we talked about earlier. We're going from .00144 something to .00355.
If you go at page nine of that document, that's where you would find that change that is made from 0 to 0.
Yeah. And for council's information, we did this change to be effective February 1st, not January 1st, so you don't have to pass all three readings in the meeting. We can just do a reading and then we can complete it in January, which would be the normal process.
Okay. So are you fit, Counselor Brown?
So can I, can I move the first reading of bylaw 1649C, electrical distribution bylaw amendment? To consider the first reading on the bylaw?
You sure can.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. It's complex, but as I said, the impact on the bill is an average of $1.28 per, per household. And no choice, you're right, Counselor. As my husband would call it, it's a Merry Christmas handbook. Okay. All right. We're going to move on and we're going to go on to seven. Now, the Carston Airport, here is what I was going to say before we go any further. The Carston Airport is an item that we need to consider in an intermunicipal agreement with the county. Therefore, it is best not to go in a detail of it at this point. All information is there for your really coming to understand what's happening. The land is Crown land. We had a license to operate on that Crown land. The cost of that operation per year to us, the license, was $67 and a few cents. Today, that same $67 is in your budget as $200 under license, under the airport account. That is what we pay today. The rest is really to be discussed with the county. There is an option, there are three options. One, to buy the land at so much per acre. One, to carry on the status quo, having that license to operate. And the other one is a little bit of a mixed bag.
You can, you can change your license of occupation to sublease.
That's what it is. So having said that, Counselor Bainbury, that is your portfolio. I really don't think we want to go into much detail on, but if you have, if you have some information to bring more clarity, that'd be great.
I want to go into one very, very important part of this airport.
Please go ahead.
The land is owned by the Crown.
Yes.
We are the second owners.
Are we not the owner? We have a license to operate, that's all what we have. That's all what we have for agreement with the Crown.
If I look at a mario, it says, row number, owner one is Her Majesty, the Queen of the right of Alberta. And owner two is managed by the town of Carson, which is correct. If that is the situation, explain to me why the county of Carston taxes two government bodies?
Counselor, your question is well taken and is a point well taken. And honestly, I do not have the answer, except that all what I can say is that need to be discussed properly because I do not understand that either. Maybe Jeff can enlighten us.
Just to clarify, to my understanding, they do not tax the land. So we don't get a tax from the county. They tax the privately-owned hangars. So they're taxing private improvement on Crown land, which is true.
Okay, but they, if they're taxing a building, they're taxing a footprint and that's part of the land. And I, and I'm saying that they're, they're doing literally nothing, giving back to the airport. And like, like you said, and I agree with you, Mayor, that we need to have this on an intermunicipal agreement.
It will have to be.
If they're drawing taxes off, there should be something put back into it.
Well, let's put it this way, if they're generating revenue and we are the payer of the expenses to that piece of land, maybe there is something to discuss.
We should be collecting. It's completely appropriate as part of the ICF discussion.
Yes. So essentially, it's a point well taken, Counselor, it's well taken. And that always has been a little bit in the past of one of contention. And when we tried to bring that up, there was no appetite to discuss it. The status quo was, was what it was. But in a framework of the intermunicipal under the new provincial guideline with the MGA, the status quo can no longer be the answer.
Exactly.
So we have a little bit of support from the MGA on that one. All right. Gulf Coast Request for Proposal. Now, if you have, would you like Jeff to explain a little bit, since he is the one who wrote that, that proposal in the light of the Blackstone management willing jointly with the town to accept that we no longer carry on the contract as, as is? Maybe Jeff can give us a sense where we're going for the future.
So just really briefly, I've been hearing a number of things. I've been approached by a number of people of all manner of proposals that people want to get, get, participate in a golf course in some way. And so I was wanting to draft something that we could collect those quickly without limiting the scope of them. I don't know the word, a point that we want to start eliminating certain types of proposals. We'll get there, obviously, we have to discern at one point. So I just tried to write a relatively open-ended RFP. That if you have a thought about how you could participate in something viable, bring them and let's talk. It's not that complex at this point. But then it will give council the opportunity to look them over and say, "We think this one or this one serves us better. We're going to do further due diligence with this group and/or this group." That was my thought behind it.
Okay. Question from Counselor Selfman, Counselor Coe?
Jeff, the ticket proposal is open-ended, so I don't know that we need to discuss it a whole lot.
There's just one point that I would just look at. On the second line, you're talking about staffing management or ownership of the golf course. We don't have an appetite to sell it, do we? Is that what you're indicating?
You may not. I just know there's groups interested in proposing it. And so I've told them I wasn't making any kind of, like, when they've asked me, I've told them, "This is completely going to be up to council and the nature of your proposal. I wasn't going to limit it now." But I wouldn't suggest for a minute that's, I'm not trying to emphasize any avenue you're looking to go down. I just didn't want to eliminate it.
Counselor Coe, if you read the whole RFP, you will see it definitely points more with somebody that would, that would operate it on our behalf possibly.
I just don't want anybody to think that, maybe this council will think differently. But I'm not really of the appetite to sell that thing right now.
Well, I don't know that, I don't really think there is appetite on this, Counselor Coe.
Mayor, I just move that we accept the request for proposal as outlined by administration. I'll file and move ahead of this.
Thank you. All in favor?
I have a question.
Question, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not in favor of selling it either, but I have got a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
If, if we're not selling it, it should be a revenue generator to, to the town as well. We've got a, well, bear me out. We have certain costs, right? When you have a management group that's looking after that, to me, that separates it from the Parks and Recreation Department, where we know that we don't make a lot of money with our parks and recreation. I understand that. But you've got a group of people who are looking after that, managing it under the assumption that they're going to make some money. Or why would they do it, right? Obviously, this group feels that they haven't made sufficient money and somebody else did. But I think if, if there's a group of people that are running it, thinking that they're going to make money, they're going into it with that, their eyes open, you know? There is profit and loss. I mean, you can make money in a business or you can lose money. But if we as a town are going to have to subsidize and continue to pay to help people run it, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I think that the, the group who manages it, they need to be responsible for the cost and the upkeep. That's my opinion.
Do you suggest we sell the aggregate home now because we subsidize their rodeo?
It's not the same.
Can we sell the pool too?
Okay, now here, okay. I, I understand, Counselor, I understand what you're saying. But I also believe that in a whole realm of the recreation, it is a recreation facility. It is very hard to make money on recreation facilities, very hard. You can limit the losses, but to truly make money, it takes a lot of manpower and shoes are made. are made some money, and we know that makes some money, but not at the tune that you think that it. Or councillor Gold adds.
I was just going to mention the residual effects as well that we need to remember.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so, I mean, there is truth in all those statements, councillor.
I'm in total agreements with councillor South, but there is a time situation we have to deal with also, Jeff. We're looking into the season and getting this up and running. We need to consider that. So I would suggest that we need to take a council meeting designated for two or three of these, like the intermunicipal, the golf course, and possibly the airport or something like that, and utilize that whole council meeting to deal with those things, because we are under a time.
Okay.
The intent of closing it January 5th is I'd have to the council meeting next Tuesday.
Right, this is why we need to.
That was the intent.
This is why we need to move on that motion. Councillor South, do you want to add something?
Just one quick comment, Mayor, and that's, it's our facility, but we also need to make sure that it's viable. And I think we made a motion in the last council to look at options that would make it more viable, so I'll just leave it at that.
Exactly right. Okay, there's a campground and all that. So, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to seven C, the ACP for intermunicipal. So Jeff has received a phone call from the county, and essentially, they have agreed to work with the town of McGrath on an intermunicipal collaboration plan. And the other aspect was the intermunicipal development plan. So essentially, it involves ORSC to develop those items, and Jeff can maybe be a little bit more specific there.
Let me just, real quick, I've emailed Murray, I met with Wade Alston last week, they were proposing to the county at their meeting yesterday, that the county enter into giving the Alberta Community Partnership Grant, is what ACP stands for, to bring in a facilitator to help them get their intermunicipal collaboration framework moving forward. So not a mediator, not an arbitrator, but just kind of that third party that they can work through. And also to hire Old Man River to redo their intermunicipal development plans, because both us and McGrath actually have ran into some roadblocks trying to get those updated the last few years with the county. And so I quickly emailed Murray yesterday morning and said, look, this is your last meeting by the end of the year, and tomorrow is my last meeting by the end of the year, and the ACP deadline is January 2nd. I said, do you think there's an appetite for us to look at, if they'll entertain McGrath, would they look at Carstens? So he emailed me just this morning and said, my council made a motion to partner with the town for an ACP grant, to bring in a facilitator to do both the IMDP and the intermunicipal collaboration framework.
If?
If the town will manage the grant, just because they have to do six of these, right? Because they have so many bordering neighbors. So if we'll manage and be the managing partner, they would like to see us secure some funds to hire a facilitator through the process. I think it's a very good thing. But what we need is a motion of council to support the ACP grant for intermunicipal collaboration framework and intermunicipal development plan.
Yeah. Councillor Barnes, you have your hand up.
I'm just ready to make a motion today.
Please do so.
I think it's great.
Please do so.
So I move that we entertain and to support the framework of being the manager for the ACP grant, working with, for the intermunicipal collaboration agreement.
And framework.
And framework.
And intermunicipal development plan.
And the intermunicipal development plan.
Those are some mouthfuls.
Okay, all right, so we have the framework and the development plan covered, and to bring in a facilitator.
Question.
Question?
Call for a question.
Yes, go ahead, councillor.
No, no. All right, they call for a question. He's talking himself.
He wants it to be.
He got a motion, that's what.
Well, it's okay, councillor, you're getting there.
Chief old man.
Councillor.
We've reached a lot of ground here.
Okay, councillor.
I appreciate the speed.
What are you talking about today?
Thank you for your support, councillor. Thanks.
Eighteen, financial report, so those were.
I need seven D.
Seven D.
Oh, seven D, yeah. Related to Minister Nortree, we just need to have an approval for this.
I move that we can send that one. We just have a spelling mistake.
Oh, I saw a card, so we'll fix that. Yeah, we'll get it fixed. Thank you.
Trust me, when I sign them, I'll look at that pretty.
Maybe I'm feeling a little rumpy, not sure, but.
Remember what your colleagues have just.
Yeah, I know. No, what I'm wondering here, and maybe it's not appropriate, I don't know, but I'm going to ask you. Did we not have a meeting scheduled with them originally? But we've made no reference to the fact that we had the meeting scheduled and then they canceled on us. I know we're being nice here. Do we always have to be? I mean, we're tiptoeing around this government.
I thought we were going down the middle of the road here, but I had to rein Schenman a little bit on his letter.
It's just my feeling that, you know, yeah, we're disappointed, but we're also disappointed that they canceled a meeting on us and it's been the second year in a row.
Essentially, you know, that's the way it goes.
You're going to drive that thumbtack with a sledgehammer or?
Yeah, exactly. All right, so all in favor of that letter? Thank you, let's move on. Eighteen, financial report. Financial report, originally, there was none in your packet. Hawkins has managed to get one for us. And I realize you have not had the chance to read it.
Well, I uploaded it a couple days ago and emailed you, so some of you have seen.
So you should be familiar with it, more or less. So essentially, what we need, as always, is to approve the financial as of October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, councillor Gold, makes a motion to approve the financial as presented. All in favor? Thank you. The committees, well, there are quite a few that did not have any meetings this month. There is one that I did not put in SMA as a review, although I want to thank councillor Barnes for having been there. I think it would be, since I was not at the meeting, wiser to present you with a management account next month. There was one delegation, it was from the community foundation, and the community foundation was there to explain to Mayor Reeves as to what the purpose of the foundation is, how they get their money, and how much good they do to communities that apply for that funding. And they will focus apparently in the next round on rural crime program, reducing the occurrence of rural crime. And if they have something like that, they will support those. Yes. Anything else you want to talk about those reports?
Yeah, Mayor, I want to talk about committee reports. This sounds awful, but when I look at a committee report, I almost feel like I'm in grade school again, and I've been out on a whatever day trip, and I'm going to report back that we had all this fun at these committee meetings. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that we need to report a committee meeting where the generalities of the committee is conducted. Now, I went to ORSC last Thursday, and that was an important meeting. They had a, to give you an example, they had their organizational meeting, and then we had a discussion. But it came out there that they would have a two percent increase on our fees, you know, and the two percent increase on GSI, or whatever it is, and also a hundred dollars on subdivision, a hundred dollar increase on subdivision. Those three points are important to the town.
Exactly right.
But if we go to another meeting, like Shunup Foundation, that myself and councillor Drew went to, we had an excellent meeting, and nothing there was involved, actually, that we need to bring back to council.
And then you felt nothing to report?
Then that's the way I feel, but, and for us to simply send in the minutes of a committee, I think that's an exercise of futility, and I think it's an administration situation where our administrator doesn't need to deal with that kind of stuff.
Okay, I tend to disagree with you. The reason I disagree with you is that everybody around this table wants to know what's going on, on every committee that's happening in a town, to give us a sense of where our donors are going, and what's the direction that is taken, should be informed, and should have the privilege to have the councillor that is in charge to give clarification on items that don't understand. And I think that's your role, you're the eyes and ears for council. Otherwise, we will all go to all the committees, and I would be ludicrous and crazy, and you couldn't stand it, and you wouldn't ask for to be re-elected.
I'm disagreeing, though. I like, I agree with you, I like to see the minutes, then I can look at the minutes and see if there's something that jumps out at me. My problem is, I'm trying to get, well, History Society, for example, I'm trying to get them to submit the minutes. It'd be nice if they submitted to the town, they can make it part of our package.
To me, it's a sense of accountability that is important. And don't call it useless, because if you remember, there is an accountability on our part two. And Jim knows who has been there, who has not been there. That's part of how our evaluation is factored in too.
No, go ahead, councillor, finish your.
That's the reason why I remember that a previous council enacted these council reports is because of the delinquency of council members attending these committees. And if that happens, you know, we're all adults, we're all responsible, we've been assigned to these committee meetings, then there should be a monetary situation based on not attending. But for me to go to an airport meeting and discuss the generalities of the airport, what's happening out there in generalities, is ludicrous to bring to this council. If it deals with a financial obligation, or something to do with the finances end of the town, then it's important that I make out a report touching that.
Councillor, let me tell you something else, why I believe that it is a useful exercise to have the minutes or a report, is because it's a public document. The public has as much the eyes on those documents as you have, and that should.
Citroen committee reports, I noticed one of my reports didn't get, and I guess I got it in too late.
I got it after the fact, councillor, yeah, I'll have it for next one.
Yeah, but I do want to talk about, I attended the Southwest meeting.
Oh, yes.
Really enjoyed, it was a good meeting, and I feel there's great value in attending that meeting. But along the line, pardon me?
That feed you well.
They do. But it was a very informative meeting and stuff. But there was a matter that come up, it's kind of a matter of importance. They've asked three or four of us to attend a conference up in Banff, and so I need to bring it back to you, whether to get permission, whether I can tell them. I need to tell them by the first meeting in January, whether or not the council will support me in going, it's a three-day conference up in Banff in March. Now, they have said that they will pay the registration, the early bird registration comes up, and it's around six hundred dollars, or six or eight hundred dollars, and Southwest has said that they're going to pay the registration fees for everybody that attends that meeting.
So, give me a sense, what kind of conference is it? Is it a RIDA conference?
Yes, it's a RIDA in economic development, they're going to discuss some of the things that are being proposed around the province, different things and ideas, just compare different ideas, and just discuss the importance of sharing ideas and.
So, hold on, so is that the conference where the minister come and join?
Yes, there will be a minister.
Okay, so we have an EDEV representative also at this table?
That's why I said in my report, and you'll see it, I said that they asked either myself or that person, and I have no problem, but I would just like to make sure that somebody go.
Okay, all right, because really, if it is an EDEV, we should allow the person of the EDEV to go.
Yeah, that's what I put in my report too.
Yes.
Because they asked me if I liked it, and I said, well, I would love to go, but that all depends on who the EDEV person, if they're available to go or not.
Right, so, because I know a little bit about those kind of.
See, Rob went to that last year.
Yeah, so this is why I think we have to, really, if it's EDEV, let's give the chance to the EDEV person to deal with it.
But I have to know, I have to let them know by the first meeting in January, whether the EDEV person or myself is going to attend.
But we have an OSC, councillor South, if you can make it.
That's right, it's going to be in March.
And that's another story.
Yeah, middle of March in that area, or, no, wait a minute, it's going to be, I think, the third week in March.
Councillor South, you will have to be able to tell us, but he needs to know in early January.
See if I can cram it into a moment. Yeah, I can go.
You talk to your people.
So it would be a matter, they would pay the, I think they would pay the registration, but the town would have to pay for the per diems and the mileage.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, so councillor Benry.
Is it necessary for any of us to attend that? Because Southwest does send out a full document on those meetings that they have, and what's happening with that, and so I wonder.
Yes, I'll contact Bev and have her send me the information.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
So tentatively, we would be willing to send somebody, but if it makes sense.
Let me clarify my comment. I could care less whether I go or I don't. If you want me to go, I will, if you don't, I don't.
Well, what we need to understand is what the purpose is, right? Okay, so, there is, it's six o'clock, the food is ready, and Jim is adding.
Mine's literally two minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just need, so, communities in Bloom with, like, new committee members, they have two names to put forward.
That has to go in camera.
Perfect. See, I told you this was going to be quick. And the second question was, oh, agridome, I'm meeting with them tomorrow with the agridome for the first time. They had the question, and I talked to you in regards to it, are we, are we, what happens, their concern is, what happens if they do not get their government money?
Okay, so that is a very good point, and I don't have the answer, and I do not know that the government has any direction. Last year, they received their money six months behind time, which gave them a lot of angst, and gave us the same angst. This year, we have no direction whatsoever, so it will have to come back to council as to how much money we're talking about, and how much can be done by them as fundraiser or by grants. So we will need to kind of figure out what kind of fundraisers they could do, and what kind of grant they could apply with us as a partner, possibly.
That's all I needed to know.
Because I have no other idea.
Sorry?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's break for.
We'll do the peace officer report.
You want to do the peace officer report? Okay, let's do the peace officer report. It is an interesting report.
It is.
And if you notice, this time around, we took the pie charts away from the report, so that it would be a more linear kind of report. Any questions regarding that report? And if you notice this time around, we took the pie charts away from, from the report so that it would be a more linear kind of report. Any questions regarding that report? No? Do you like that format?
Yes.
It used to just be a mess of graphs and bars.
All right. So, so maybe you want to say to Brad that we appreciate his manual report and to stay away from this, but they confuse us.
Yeah, there you go. That's all we, we loved it.
Just to, just to mention here, if you look at the Alberta Southwest Bulletin, which was included here, at the bottom, it says upcoming, and it tells a little bit about that conference in Banff, 21st of March through 23rd.
And if you look on Southwest, Southgrew, there is a conference coming up in Milk River, I think, with Doug Griffiths. Doug Griffiths has written a certain way to not make your town swear, to kill your community. It's a very good read. And so if some of you are interested, go, please let Jeff know.
It's long overdue.
We already have it.
Yeah, it's long overdue.
I thought there was going to have one in February. They were going to have one in February. Nothing. Okay. All right. So let's have a break.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you for dinner.
Move to recess. Are we going to start meeting?
You will have to go downstairs. The food has been prepared by our staff, and we thank them.
Actually, it's all Jim.
Well, she's the staff.
She just had her own play piano at award party, so she just left. She'll be back in a bit.
Okay. All right. So somebody wants to bless the food for us?
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet and to have this meal together. The mayor, council, and administration ask us to bless this food that will nourish and strengthen us, and we're grateful for the hands that have prepared it, for the work that they have done. We offer these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
So it's down in the gym. There's tables set up. And yeah, Joe had to fail.